Remotely, while the city administrator Laura Smith and city clerk Audrey McClanahan are at work at their own workspaces in City Hall. The public is invited to participate by using the instructions included on the city council calendar. Item that's listed on the front page of the website, missionks.org. Public participants will be allowed to make comments through the online chat feature. So please note that those comments are visible by the entire group. If you wish to make a comment, public comment, please state your name and city of residence for the record. And also be conscientious of others trying to speak and speak slowly and clearly. And if I need to confirm something that may have been missed, I will ask for clarification. We will begin our meeting with our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Audrey, would you please call roll?
Okay. Slashmacher.
Here.
Thomas.
Yes.
Fulton House.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Rothrock.
Here.
Inman is not with us, is that correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you. Crane.
Here.
And Flora.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to item one, public hearings. And we do not have any public hearings this evening, so we'll move on to item two, special presentations. Although we are meeting virtually tonight, we do have one proclamation that we'd like to share. July is Parks and Recreation Month, which recognizes the integral work of staff to create and maintain programs that are vitally important to the quality of life in our community and ensuring the health of all our citizens and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of the region. I would like to thank our Parks and Recreation Director Penn Omeny and his entire staff for all the hard work they do so that we have all the opportunities to join, to enjoy our parks and recreation facilities. You help us to be healthier and are very important part of our community. We have especially appreciated your creativity and continued commitment to serving our residents through these very challenging times. So thank you and your staff very much. I see lots of hand clapping going on, Penn.
Thank you.
And thumbs up.
It's a pleasure to be a part of the community and delivering these services. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to item three, issuance of notes and bonds. We don't have any, so we're moving on to item four, consent agenda. And our consent agenda does have five items on it this evening. Our council committees met on July 1st and we fully discussed, discussed each and one of these items. The committee did agree that the items listed on our consent agenda are routine enough that they can be considered under a single motion. Other items considered by the committee that evening will be presented under the committee reports later on in our agenda tonight. If a council member or member of the public would like an item removed from the consent agenda, they may request that at this time. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the city council adopted consent agenda as printed items four A through four E.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, Audrey, please call for the vote.
Davis.
Aye.
Slashmacher.
Aye.
Flora.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Rothrock.
Aye.
Fulton House.
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right. Moving on to item five, this is for time for public comments. If there is any member of the public participating via Zoom that would like to make a comment on items that are not listed on the agenda this evening, now would be the time to do that. So please submit your comments or questions using the chat feature. And remember that your questions are visible to all of those participating in the Zoom We do have a comment. Are we taking comments verbally or are we using chat feature? Laura.
I think if we've done both, but I think certainly we could unmute and.
Okay. It is from Zachary Green. Can you unmute him, please?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Thank you for letting me say a few words. And I want to be respectful everyone's time, but I thank the council for how openly you let us contribute to these meetings. So my name's Zach, Zachary Green. I'm a Kansas native. I moved here to Mission Ward One from Lawrence. And before that, I lived in Douglas, Kansas. I'm a KU graduate and I'm a third year MD PhD student in the KUMC neuroscience program. And for six years, I've been a research assistant at the Alzheimer's Disease Center. I don't pretend to hold the knowledge to be an expert in Alzheimer's or medicine. If it goes well, after many years and many trials, I will be. But for now, I'm just trying to do my best to be an ally for those who live with dementia and other chronic diseases. I spent over three years as a hospice volunteer. I spent a lot of time with individuals who are at the end of life due to dementia, chronic illness, and otherwise. And while it's difficult and painful work, it was always rewarding. Because of that, I participated in a program called pairs in my first year of medical school, where each student's paired with a mentor who is an individual with Alzheimer's who we'd spend time with, learning about how they struggled with the disease and how they found value in their everyday lives. My pair was a very strong, friendly, and altruistic man. And he really liked barbecue. And every week, we would meet at RJ's just down the street from where I live. So it sort of shook me to read of the incident that happened this week. For those who didn't see it, an employee of RJ's asked a man to wear a mask while in the store. The man rejected the employee's request by saying he had an exemption. And when the employee asked to see this exemption, the man flashed his firearm at the employee saying that that was his exemption. I've heard some hand waving, that this was just bravado, or attention-seeking behavior, or that it was just an empty threat. I don't agree with that excuse because the goal of an empty threat remains the same as a full threat, which is to instill fear. Whether or not this man intended to shoot anyone who stood in his way is not the point. It's the fact that a minimum wage employee, an 18-year-old hoping to work up enough money to go to school, was threatened with an object that could have ended his life, all just for enforcing the mask mandate. I think many in Kansas confuse being patriotic with being a gun owner or being champions of their own personal liberty. But in my view, being a patriot is synonymous with kindness. It's when one is willing to sacrifice their own comfort and to set aside their own wants to protect and serve their neighbor. I think being a patriot is synonymous with mercy, which is seeing that your countryman is less fortunate than you and using your power not to press him further down, but to elevate you both. It's entirely possible that the employee of this story, the man, this council, and I myself are all going to be safe from COVID even if we catch it. But it's also certain that every patient in the hospice wards that I used to frequent, every Alzheimer's patient cared for at our clinic, and every Mission residence who falls into a high-risk category is facing a real concrete risk of premature death from a disease that could end their life away from their families and away from their homes. I don't say any of this to admonish or criticize any officials or actions by the city. I actually just came here today hoping that this body will reassure those still working that these threats, empty or not, will not be written off. The mask mandate will be taken seriously and that employees who work to enforce that, threatened or otherwise, will have the full backing of our city and our law enforcement. And more than anything, that the lives of Missions vulnerable are worth more than political statements or fleeting comforts. Thank you, and thank you for letting me take your guys' time.
Thank you, Zachary, for your comments. We appreciate them. Is there anybody else in the public that needs to make a comment at this time? Seeing none, then we will move on to item six of our agenda, which are planning commission action items. We don't have any items from our planning commission. So we'll move on to item seven, which is committee reports. Councilmember Crane, will you please provide a report on the Finance and Administration Committee?
I will. Thank you, Mayor. The Finance and Administration Committee met on July 1st and considered three items, including acceptance of the meeting minutes. The surplus property resolution was approved under the consent agenda. There is one additional item for consideration on tonight's regular agenda. That was the issue that we addressed on racial equity and social justice, the council and community conversations. In the weeks following the death of George Floyd, Mission, like many other cities across the region and the nation, have been engaged in conversations surrounding racial equity, social justice, implicit bias, and how our local government operations, including law enforcement, are impacted by the same. Our council has been actively involved in conversations since the June 17th council meeting, working to find an appropriate way to address these important issues for our own community. At our July 1st committee meeting, we discussed our desire that as a full city council, we wanted to join with Mayor Appletoft and Chief Hadley in publicly condemning the action/inaction of Minneapolis Police and to establish our intent to advance actionable items and steps well into the future. A draft statement was presented to the committee and is included for consideration and adoption by the council this evening. In addition, specific action steps were outlined by the council, and a formal adoption of those action steps will help communicate our goals and objectives with the public. Therefore, in order to continue to advance our conversations in the most productive manner, Mayor, I move the city council approve the statement of the governing body condemning the murder of George Floyd and committing to ongoing conversations and dialogue surrounding issues of racial equity, social justice, and accountability. Mayor, sorry.
Was that a second?
Yes.
It was a motion, we have a motion and a second. Hearing none, Audrey, please call for the vote.
Flora.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Fulton House.
Aye.
Rothrock.
Aye.
Slashmacher.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
And Thomas.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Also, Mayor, I move the city council confirm the action plan to be put into motion, beginning with a date to be determined in August of 2020.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Hearing none, Audrey, please call for the vote.
Davis.
Aye.
Fulton House.
Aye.
Rothrock.
Aye.
Flora.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Slashmacher.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Mayor, I would also add that for the public's use, if they continue to check the website for dates on the training sessions, especially the August one, it should be out by the end of next week on our website, the date for August.
All right. Thank you.
Maybe sooner if we can agree to it this evening.
And does that conclude your report, Debbie?
It does. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Flora, will you please provide us a report from the Community Development Committee?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The Community Development Committee also met on July 1st and considered six items. These included acceptance of the committee minutes, the 2020 Rock Salt Contract, playground equipment repairs, and the amendment to the special purpose permit granted to Sand Hills Brewing for use of approved, or sorry, use of a public sidewalk for outdoor dining, which were all approved on the consent agenda. There are two additional items for the council's consideration on our regular agenda tonight. The first item is the comprehensive plan update restart. The city engaged Confluence last fall to assist in an update of the city's comprehensive land use plan, which is required by state statute to be maintained and reviewed periodically. Since the last plan was updated in 2007, the city felt it was crucial to update the plan in a manner that accurately reflects the values of the community and the emerging trends in land use, management, and development. A kickoff meeting was held in early March at the very beginning of the coronavirus onset, and subsequent stay-in-place orders issued by the governor or county commission in the city resulted in delay of any further activity. Now that the stay-at-home orders or stay-in-place orders have been lifted, staff recommends that the process be reinitiated. This will include public engagement methods that conform with COVID-19 safety precautions, such as a new interactive civic engagement tool that will be incorporated into the city's website and allow for community feedback. Also, members of the steering committee were identified and presented and include representation from the city council, Sustainability Commission, Planning Commission, Parks Recreation Tree Commission, and other community members. Mayor, I move the city council approve the proposed timeline and tools to be utilized for the comprehensive plan update process going forward and review the membership of the steering committee recommended to assist in facilitating the process.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? Mayor? Yes.
Mrs. Bryan. Councilmember Davis had asked that we consider reaching out to some folks that might represent a little bit more diversity on the committee membership. And so we did that. We contacted Wally Sirdra, who is a Mission resident. She lives in the 400 block of Beverly. And she is an adversity and inclusion manager of Chikari and Bacon and on the Board of Directors for the Mid-America LGBT Chamber of Commerce. And she's accepted our invitation to participate in the steering committee. And we also spoke with TJ Roberts, who is a recent resident and business member to our community. He's a Farm Bureau financial manager and he opened up an office on Johnson Drive within the past few months. He's gotten very actively involved with the Mission Merchants Group. And I understand he recently moved into the locales, new resident at the locale as well. And he's also accepted. And I believe Councilmember Rothrock had reached out to a resident of Ward One who was interested in participating. I sent her an email this morning, but I've not heard back from her yet. Councilmember Rothrock wanted to add to that, but I would suggest those two names being added to the list of councils. So inclined.
All right. If I could make one comment before we get too far. Councilmember Thomas did have to exit our meeting due to an emergency, so I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that. So Ken, did you have a comment?
I just didn't know if you wanted that to be an amendment, or how is that handled in terms of adding to the list?
It's your pleasure. I think an amendment would be acceptable.
Well, I make a motion to support your added two members to the task force. And I'll wait for a second.
Second. We have, okay, so we have an amendment and a second.
To the, that's to the composition of the task force.
Okay. Any other discussion?
This is Councilmember Rothrock.
Yes.
Would it be possible to add that third person? Because I spoke with her just last night and I know that she was interested in maybe, I guess it's possible, I maybe even fumbled her email address incorrectly, or she just hadn't seen it. But I do know that she expressed interest, and I think that she would be a great addition.
I think that would be fine. Anybody have any objections to that?
No.
And her name is?
Sharon Williams.
Okay, thank you.
I didn't know her last name. I got Sharon, but I'm sorry, I didn't catch her last name.
Nope, that's okay.
All right, so we need a vote on this motion, is that correct? There's no more discussion of this amendment?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. Audrey, would you call, oh, I'm sorry, Sally.
Oh, no, I was unmuted myself.
Oh, okay. There's no more discussion, then Audrey, please call for the vote.
Fulton House.
Aye.
Rothrock.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Flora.
Aye.
Slashmacher.
Aye.
And David.
Aye.
Motion carried.
So now, that's just for the amendment, correct?
Correct. Now you have the original motion.
Right. Any discussion on the original motion? Or hearing none, Audrey, please call for that vote.
Rothrock.
Aye.
Flora.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Aye.
Slashmacher.
Aye.
And Fulton House.
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Council, we do have one additional item from our committee, which is the drone ordinance. Unmanned aircraft systems, UAS, commonly called drones, have a host of applications, including law enforcement, land surveillance, wildlife tracking, search and rescue operations, disaster response, and recreational use. However, Parks Recreation and Tree Commission, along with staff, thought it was important to address UAS concerns, such as operator ability, usage intent, and permissions in public and private spaces. Staff reviewed UAS content from state laws and various municipal ordinances, then partnered with the Mission Police Department and the city attorney to draft an ordinance that encompasses expectations of operations and appropriate locations. Other considerations addressed in the ordinance are UAS registration, privacy considerations, event use and permissions, impeding and obstructing public safety operations and personnel, as well as applicable penalties. The penalty mirrors the current structure associated with other general non-aggravating citations, with a typical fine amount between $100 and $150, including mandatory $40 court costs. Staff spoke with Judge Drell about whether the general provisions were appropriate to use for various offenses. He supported the unclassified violation range due to the variation and severity of the misuse within each section and recommended that the amount not be added to the fine schedule. Mayor, I move the city council approve the ordinance outlining expectations for UAS use within missions public and private spaces.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Hearing none, Audrey, please call for the vote.
Slashmacher. Fulton House.
Aye.
Rothrock.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
And Flora.
Sally, are you having a audio problem?
Yes, that may mean she can't hear us either.
Okay. All right.
No.
Okay. All right. I do believe that concludes Councilmember Flora's report, so we will move on in our Item eight would be unfinished business, which we do not have any of. And item nine is new business. And we have one item to be considered under new business, which is the state of the emergency disaster proclamation extension. Ms. Smith, will you please provide us information on this topic?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Back on March 13th, 2020, which seems like a lifetime ago, we issued our state of emergency disaster proclamation, which put us under a state of emergency, which allows us to be eligible for reimbursement for any disaster management or related expenses associated with the COVID pandemic to be reimbursed to us through FEMA. We subsequently amended that resolution on March 18th, April 1st, April 15th, and last on May 13th of 2020. And at that time, we extended our emergency declaration through today's date, or July 15th of 2020. We did that in order to kind of stay aligned with the state's emergency declaration and to help us gauge the success of various reopening and recovery plans and really just the state of the pandemic situation in the county and the state. Over the last two months, we've had various recommendations for reopening city facilities, programs, and services that have been developed and reviewed and approved by the city council. As I mentioned, extending that state of emergency allowed us to kind of keep the umbrella of protection in place while also preserving the greatest degree of flexibility for us to be able to react and respond to changes in public health information and make changes accordingly. In early June, Governor Kelly and leadership in the legislature were able to reach an agreement on a compromise bill, which was House Bill 2016, which addressed the governor's emergency powers and extended the statewide emergency declaration through September 15th of 2020. So we wanted to come before you tonight and recommend that we extend the city proclamation or declaration through September 16th, which would be our regularly scheduled September council meeting, in order to remain in alignment with the state order. The state's order could potentially be extended beyond that September 15th date, but certainly we want to just kind of keep ourselves aligned with that as we look at some considerations. So I did want to just touch briefly because I know that we've seen statewide and in the county, we're continuing to see increases in COVID cases. And we've been continually sort of evaluating that and discussing the impacts of that on our various reopening and recovery plans, most specifically as it relates to reopening of the community center facility and municipal court. So earlier this month, we had our first in-person court experience, and I believe we had our second in-person court last evening, which I've not had the full report on, but took a lot of steps prior to resuming in-person court to reduce docket sizes and to try to deal with cases outside of the courtroom wherever possible. I believe that on the July 7th court date, we had about 30 participants who attended court. And we were able, with some additional social distancing markers and Plexiglas barriers, monitoring entrances and exits, I think we felt like we were successful in being able to move people through that environment safely. And Emily, you may have a better report for what happened last evening? I don't know if you've heard any.
I didn't hear. We did a debrief after the first one, and no real drastic changes were recommended. And I just didn't hear if it was comparable. But the volume of processing that we've seen outside of court, just via email, has kept up, and people are looking for every way to handle their business outside of court still. So I see that transaction each day, so that seems promising on the citizen end as well.
I know that Johnson County's district courts, who had gone to in-person, I believe, had halted that or kind of took a step back this week. I think there's some differences in volume, certainly, between the district court situation and ours. I believe we would, from a staff perspective, say that we think that the precautions that we have in place are working at this time, but certainly we continue to evaluate that on a week-by-week basis. You know, if we can keep the docket sizes at 30 or fewer, that's a pretty manageable number of folks to bring through. And again, be the first to try to look at rescheduling or stepping back if we feel like that's a situation that we cannot handle appropriately. At the community center, I think we knew this was going to be really our most challenging area of operations to reopen. You know, we did some surveying in advance of that reopening in terms of what we could expect or what we thought we might expect in terms of patrons returning to the facility. They've been hesitant to do so, and although our numbers are increasing, I think the first week we saw, on average, about 100 to 120 patrons per day that were coming to take advantage of the amenities and work out and exercise at the community center. That number has increased not exponentially. not exponentially, but certainly is increasing. I think we hit a high of about 280. I don't have those numbers in front of me, so Penn may have to just nod his head, but we've been somewhere between 250 and 300 patrons, kind of seeing an increase in that. But still have some concerns. I think as we've communicated, we've had some staff members who have tested positive that have resulted in some quarantining situations. I think we still feel comfortable with kind of the protections and the protocols. I know we've revisited those since those positive tests. But we are seeing some stressors as a result of that and just kind of general usage of the facility that we're putting some stressors, I think, on staff in particular in terms of being able to feel comfortable in managing the interactions and the flow of the patrons through the facility. So Penn and I have been in conversation this week, really looking at, are there some things? I think we want to avoid a complete shutdown again, if that's, you know, something that at all possible. So we've talked about how we might be able to back off some of the amenities that we've opened up or scale back some of the things that we're offering in order to improve that experience potentially for patrons and/or in particular, our staff. And so we've really looked at what has the facility usage been since our reopening? Where are the areas that perhaps our patrons are having more difficulty in following the rules and the protocols that have been established? And what opportunities do we have to just help everyone feel more comfortable all the way around? And I don't know, Penn, I'm happy to walk through some of those, or if you would prefer to kind of share some of the changes that we're proposing.
Yeah, absolutely. So one of the one of the big stressors for our team was having the gymnasium open to basketball players. There was consistent conflicts arising from individuals not wanting to abide by our policies and huge stress placed on our team trying to help them understand the importance of following these mandates. So we recommend closing that. We also recommend suspending the opening of the track lanes for the time being. We anticipate that that would be another situation where individuals aren't able to maintain the social distancing or the requirements needed to keep everyone healthy and safe. We're also looking at adjusting the cardio equipment farther apart. So initially, we had discussed alternating every other machine, which gives us a little over six feet separation from each machine. And based on discussions we've had, we feel comfortable on use patterns, on the distancing requirements of alternating to every third machine, so that there's essentially two machines in between as a buffer. And then in cases where we do need to access an additional machine, now we've got the gymnasium available and accessible again to move a piece of cardio equipment back down there. We also revisited discussions about ventilation systems and ensuring that all of our fans and anything that kind of moves the air just within confined spaces is shut off. And all of our staff are aware of that. And to the best of our knowledge, no one is aware that that's been happening.
I think we've also talked about just based on usage patterns at the pool. So the indoor pool reopened, and we are on a reservation system. And I think we're recommending that we will close for a certain period of time. Still have reservations available, but close for a certain period of time, which will allow us to pull staff from that pool area and double up or have additional staff coverage in the cardio and weight area. And so that I think they feel like there's more support for cleaning equipment in between uses and just sort of managing the patrons in the facility. I think, Penn, you indicated on average, you've, you know, you tend to have somewhere between, what, five to eight people in that area at any given time.
Yeah, in any given 30-minute time period, five to eight.
We're also looking, I think in our original recommendations, we had closed the fitness portion of the facility, or really closed the facility in its entirety on Sunday, based on usage patterns. I think we're looking at closing the facility to fitness activity on Saturdays. Again, the usage there was primarily the basketball players in the gymnasium. And so if we're taking that activity away for the time being, again, part of our challenge has been finding staff people who are available to work on the weekend shift. So that would free that up. We've talked about maintaining the Saturday rentals. So that would require us, I think, just to bring two facility staff members in. Again, the rentals are all still subject to the 45-person gathering limits and subject to the requirements that everyone be masked, excuse me, at all times while they're participating in that rental activity. So portion of the facility closed, but that would still allow us, the weekend tends to be our higher, the higher demand and higher usage for the rental of the facilities. I feel like we're missing.
The last item was amending the hours of operation so that a lot of our usage trails off right around 5:00, 5:30-ish. So we're recommending closing the facility at 6 o'clock, because once again, staffing difficulties in the evening. Just patrons are generally, when they want to come work out, they work out in a cluster of the morning and then early evening. And once we hit that dinnertime, it trails off pretty significantly.
All right. Solly, did you have a question? Or go ahead, Laura. Do you have something else, Laura?
No, I think those are things that, again, we feel like would continue to move us in the right direction, or trying to be as flexible as we can to respond to needs and concerns on the patron side and the staff side as well. But that's, those are kind of what we've looked at this this week, based on feedback from both patrons and council and our staff.
All right. Solly?
First, I apologize for my audio technical difficulty as I was trying to mime that I was going to call back in, which did work on my phone. My wireless earbuds decided to die. But as we're looking at, you know, plans to continue to encourage usage of the community center, and as you said, to avoid closure at all costs, I would just encourage staff to revisit again if we should be having a consistent mask policy across the facility that might allow for easier enforcement, with the understanding that that might prevent people from attending who want to have extremely strenuous workouts, but everyone else would still be able to work out. And I think that more people might consider attending because that's what I've been hearing from people who are unwilling to go back, so long as there is that exception. So I would just ask again that staff revisit that, especially we have a really good, you know, case out of the hair salons in Missouri where if both parties are masked, you know, they did contact tracing where there were infected staff in a salon and contacted over 100 and something people, and you know, no one else tested positive when both parties were masked. So I think that could be a good solution to be able to keep the facility going.
The other thing we didn't mention is we've got Plexiglas now that has been installed at the front entry desk counter. So there's some additional protection. We had created, you know, the six-foot distancing requirements, and people were masked, but we've got that additional protection of the Plexiglas there. The other thing we've talked about, and I think maybe is redoing another survey or modifying, sending out kind of a modified survey now that we've reopened. We did that pre-reopening. And to send that survey out again and just continue throughout this process to collect data from our patrons about, you know, what they would be most comfortable in seeing in those modifications. So with that, that's kind of where we are in terms of our COVID recovery reopening plans. Again, we're continuing to do education on the executive order related to mandatory masks in public and continuing to work through the encouragement of that, since our local law enforcement does not have the ability to specifically enforce. But we will be providing additional information in the next issue of the Mission Magazine, which is slated to come out in about another week and a half, which I think will help help spread the word. We continue to kind of talk with our local businesses about challenges and opportunities that we have to support them through that process. So again, the action before you tonight for consideration is just an extension of our emergency declaration and proclamation and doing so through September 16th.
I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that the city council approve the extension of the city of missions State of Emergency and Disaster Proclamation related to COVID-19 through September 16th, 2020.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion on this topic?
What would happen if it didn't pass?
Any, potentially, we would not have the ability to reimburse or be reimbursed for any COVID-19-related expenses that we might incur between now and then.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other discussion or comments? Hearing none. Audrey, please call for the vote.
Flora.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Crane.
You're muted, Debbie.
Aye.
Pauline House.
Aye.
Rothrock.
Aye.
Slush Mocker.
Aye.
Motion, Carrie.
All right. That concludes our new business. That's item nine. We'll move on to item 10. Comments from the city council. This is an opportunity from comments from our council members. Does anybody have anything they would like to share?
Yeah, Mayor, I actually did have something quick. I wanted to kind of address some of the comments made by Zachary Green earlier. I just wanted to make it clear to anybody that's listening to that, well, I think what happened at the restaurant was awful, and nobody should act that way and be irresponsible like that. Our police weren't informed about it when it happened, and there was no desired action to press any charges or pursue it any further from the person who was involved in the business owner. So I just don't want it to come off as if we weren't trying to, you know, take action for somebody being really stupid with their gun and flashing it at people in public. That's unacceptable. And our police never got called to come and deal with that situation when it happened, so. I'm sure they would have. They probably would have been right there if something had come up.
Yeah. Thanks for clearing that up, Nick. And I hope I didn't suggest that that wasn't the case. My, you know, my experience so far with law enforcement here has been that they're being both really helpful and really responsive to the crisis. So thank you for pointing that out.
Any other comments from council? Trent?
Thank you, Mayor. We just have a Word One meeting on July 29th in a couple of weeks from now. It's probably still going to be virtual at this time, but wanted to make that announcement.
All right. Debbie?
I just want to comment on what a phenomenal job our staffs have been doing over this last four months. It's amazing. They have not missed a beat. They are kind to people. They're answering phone calls. The police department's doing an outstanding job. Public Works is great. Lamar looks great. So through all these bad times, we're experiencing a great city with some great staff. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Very appropriate. Anybody else? All right. Hearing none. Then we'll move on to item 11, mayor's report. I do not have a report, so we'll go back to Laura for the city administrator's report.
Just a couple of things very briefly, and thank you, Councilmember Crane, for those kind words. I know that I was just commenting to some on the staff today that I think I'm finally, I think it's been amazing what we've been able to accomplish through our virtual meetings, but I have hit the wall in terms of I'm ready to be back to in-person. And it's getting harder, but we will continue to forge ahead and do our best. So we appreciate those kind words of support because some days it's easier than others. Speaking about that, I wanted to just sort of take the temperature of you all in terms of virtual meetings and whether we want to continue to meet as a council and how we want to plan. I'm assuming that we will do our budget work session and community dialogue virtually next week. Do we want to continue on into August with our virtual meetings, or what's the plan or preference there?
Are there any modifications being made to council chambers? Or are we going back to the way we were?
Yep, Emily.
We have made adjustments. I haven't seen them with my own eyes, but we moved the, it's hard to explain. We've spaced out, so we've brought four, I can't remember how many of the chairs, every other one of the chairs off of the dais to the side tables where staff normally sit. So there's more space up on the dais, and then also
We're all knocking on the door there.
The mayor's chair is closest to the next two, so we've put Plexiglas barriers on either side just for that spacing. And then the other, every other is more than six feet further than that. The number of chairs in the council chambers, most of the chairs have been stacked to the side. In order to keep six feet distance, there are only approximately three chairs on either side of council chambers at that point.
How many chairs you cut out a little bit?
Total, only three on each side for the public. We've modified the microphones so that there is greater audio throughout the space and also confirms that it is piping into the lobby. So overflow and probably most of staff would be sitting in the lobby at this point, we think. So it's greatly reduced. It feels much different, but we've tried to make it functional if that is to be. But yeah.
I have a question.
Yes, Solly first, and then Ken.
Oh, yeah. So I have a comment and a question. I think since cases are worse now than they have been since, I think, the high point, and maybe it was April, that we should continue to meet remotely. But I do have a question in case the majority of council does want to go back in person. Will there still be that option, especially for the public, to dial in and participate remotely if they don't feel comfortable coming in and filling one of those six available seats in council chambers?
Yes, we've been talking about different technology options. The, I have seen at least one group do a hybrid in-person and Zoom meeting. I think people are comfortable with the Zoom and like being a part of the meeting. But we also have felt sort of if we're in, we're in, and we've always been able to stream the meetings and have, you know, packets available ahead of time. And so the level of interaction, what we want to accommodate, once we've decided it's safe to come back versus maintaining the level of interaction or availability that we had prior to COVID with live streaming. We've talked about all the options, and we'd be happy to accommodate whatever you thought was best.
All right, Ken?
I'm still a bit reluctant, just on the basis of my medical history to be a participant in this. I also am wondering about the committee meetings, how those are going to be handled as well in terms of the spacing. And I'm pretty comfortable with the discussions that we have on Zoom. I have not had a problem with being able to express myself and to hear everybody. I know that we have some technical difficulties at times, but my preference right now is not to be in person.
All right. Anybody else?
Just to that point with committee meetings, I think there's only one way to really accommodate everyone. So we would use the same format, whether it was a council meeting or a committee meeting or a work session.
Trent?
Yeah, just kind of with the spike in cases recently and the hot Yeah, just kind of with the spike in cases recently and the hotspots that are kind of popping up all around us, I would still be comfortable doing virtual. If council disagrees, of course, I'll come in person, but in the interest of expressing my preference, I would hope we can still do virtual for the time being.
So when we say for the time being, are we talking about what timeframe, Laura?
Well, I would recommend that we at least commit to, at least through the August committee meeting, and then potentially we could reevaluate where we were in terms of trends in cases by August 19th and that legislative meeting. That would give us another full month to kind of see where we are.
Anybody else? Well, I'm hearing enough concern from council members that I think we should go with the plan of at least another month. And you're saying evaluate whether the 19th of August would be an in-person or virtual?
Yes, and I think we would have that opportunity at our August 5th committee meeting to, you know, that's, would still be two weeks out, but we, I think, would put us in a good position, and we could certainly communicate, you know, broadly what the expectations would be.
Right.
And the last thing I have is, speaking of August meeting dates, we had in our action plan that we adopted earlier, kind of surrounding the racial equity, community conversations and discussions surrounding all of that. We talked about an August date, but we know that Chief Hadley is going to be unavailable for our August 5th committee meeting. And so we wanted to look at an alternative date to have that first conversation as we start talking about policies and some of the data and statistics coming from our own mission police department. So the, probably the two most logical options would be a work session in advance of the legislative meeting on the 19th or a standalone work session on August 26th. And I don't need an answer tonight, and if you would like for me to send out a quick, you know, kind of survey and collect your preferences in the morning, I'm happy to do that. My only concern ahead of our legislative meeting would be, I don't want to create a situation where we're limiting our time for discussion, because these are such important conversations. And so that would, that would be my concern in trying to squeeze it in ahead of a legislative meeting. So I will be happy to send out that survey and collect, and then as Councilmember Crane said, we'll get, as soon as we get, land on a date, we'll get that posted out on the website so the public can participate. And not the first or last time that we have an animal in the council chambers, right?
Ken, do you have a question?
No, just a comment. I support Laura's concept that I prefer to have on the 26th, just because it gets to be really difficult when you have these back-to-back. It makes the meetings very long, and it also, it taints the way in which we're looking at the meeting that's subsequent to that, if we get into discussions that are heated or for any reason.
Okay, then I will send that email, and we'll get a date set aside, and that's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Moving on to item 13, executive session. We do not have a need for an executive session this evening, so before we adjourn tonight, I want to share with the public that the video from this meeting will be available through a link on our website, missionks.org. Therefore, being no further business tonight, I would entertain a motion to, oh, Laura.
I'm sorry, just because Councilmember Thomas told us that she needed to leave because of an emergency, I, she, she had a tree, their tree fell and took all of the power out in their neighborhood. And so she is okay except without power and with a tree, so she wanted to share that, and so no one was worried about the emergency, so.
All right.
Didn't say that earlier, sorry.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, good night.
Good night, thank you all.
Good job.